Want to make a motion?
I wish to close the executive session.
I make a move that we close the executive session.
Hold on.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of closing? When I hit the gavel, that means everybody, please be quiet. Thank you. The meeting's starting. Any discussion on -- no, okay. All in favor of closing the executive session? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, is there a motion for adjournment?
That we adjourn the work session?
Taking it. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning the work session? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Call the regular city council meeting of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Is there invocation? Who do we have for invocation?
Oh, I've got it, Mayor. You didn't have to ask me. Dear Lord, may we always hear your gavel when you hit that gavel, and may we always be attentive to you. And Lord, may the decisions be those that you would want us to make, and may our hearts be there where you want them to be. Be with our council, be with this city, as we deliberate here to night your business. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right. Call to order.
Mayor Jay Matts-Davis. Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Here.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember John Park, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District 1.
Here.
All present.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, before you get started, there are some adjustments to the agenda that need to be made, if you will allow it. Under the consent agenda, we need to add a new item number five, which is for the council to approve the 3 percent raises that was included in the budget that was approved in December. The second change is to move item number one under Old Business Ordinance 2014-11-19, move it under New Business, and make it part of item number two, as they are related.
Also basis?
Yes, and thank you. And under Reports and Presentations, item number two, if you could please delete that from the agenda.
Okay. All right, quickly, there's a quick announcement about Park of Brookhaven. Parks and Recreation Coalition, formed by citizens of Brookhaven, are having some visioning work sessions for Ashford Park, Jordan Hills, and Skyland Park. There'll be tomorrow at 7:00 at Ashford Park Community Center, Thursday at 7:00 at the city -- I'm sorry, next week, next Wednesday, yes, not this Wednesday. Next Wednesday, the 21st, Thursday, the 22nd, at Jordan Hills. Skyland Park is Monday, the 26th, with also follow-up dates for Ashford Park at 129. I guess it's a Saturday morning at 10:00, or Thursday morning at 10:00. Monday, the 2nd of February, at 10:00 at Jordan Hills, and Thursday, the 5th of February, at Skyland Park. This is, this type of meeting will give the city great feedback on what you actually want to see in your parks, what kind of improvements you'd like. So you can talk to either Sue Binkert or Terrell Carsons there. Raise your hands, please.
We should have had a public --
And you can get one of these, maybe, or is there any? Did you make any extra ones?
Your fault.
It's on the city website? Okay. It's on the city website as well, BrookhavenGA.gov. These are very important, so please attend and give your vision and input, and we'd like to see what the results of those are. So thank you, and thank you too for pointing that out. All right? And thank you. John Park, I think is going to be, these are all in District 2, correct?
Yes.
I'm going to try to come to some as well, so we'll have more of these for other parks in the city as well. All right. Next is public hearings. Item number one, Ben.
Mary House.
Yes, go ahead. All right. Item number one is the RZ14-16 Rock Haven Homes. Mr. Song will be presenting this.
As council, I will request that RZ14-16 and RZ14-17 be heard together, being that it's related.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. The applicants were here before you in November, and initially, they showed an attached product that had upwards of 36 units in total for tract AMB. They did submit a revised site plan on January 6th. It's not very clear as to exactly if it's still an attached product or a detached product based upon the site plan that's been received. We did not receive a revised letter of intent. But one thing that we would note is there is a decrease in the total number of units that's been proposed, which is now down to 29. From further review, it appears that further discussion may be required between staff and the applicant, as there may be some --
That was a typo on the agenda? It says 24?
Possibly, but yes, 29 is correct. 29 is correct. And with that said, there's still deficiencies that has to be worked out. So staff would recommend that this be deferred or remanded back to the Planning Commission for date certain, March 4th, with the council date certain of March 24th. Thank you.
Open the public hearing. We still need to have a public hearing. Right, go ahead. We'll open the public hearing.
Mr. Dillard, the applicant.
Mayor, not Mr. Rutherford. We have met with the neighborhood on several occasions, and as a result, they asked us to come back with a detached product, which this site plan recommends. I want to tell you right now, we've met with Oak Forest Neighborhood, and they are not in support. Mr. Coles and them are here tonight, I'm sure will speak to that. We're hopeful that we can persuade them to a reasonable position and support this application. We are also in the process of meeting with other neighborhoods in the area to go over this new plan. And as Ben said, we've really not had an opportunity to meet with staff to go over whatever objections they might have, because we sort of did this unilaterally within confines of our own understanding, and sometimes that's not sufficient. Although, we're always right. No, I mean, I'm just kidding. But having said that, we would ask that it go to March, and it's my understanding of the rules when you amend like this, although I couldn't find it in ordinance, that when you make this kind of significant change in the site plan, we went from a detached, an attached product that had over 35 homes to a detached product that's got under 30 homes, it's a fairly significant change. So we think it would be appropriate to give us an opportunity to meet with staff, continue to meet with the neighborhood, hopefully we can reach some accord by March. But it would go back to the March Planning Commission, then come back to you for your second meeting in March. And if there are any questions, or if I need rebuttal, I'd like to reserve my remaining time.
Thank you. Next.
Opposition, Kristin Hall. Could you give us just a second with the clock, Mayor?
Technical difficulties. Set my time down. I can count and read.
Okay. Might need a new clock. Just give me a little handheld stopwatch. All right, go ahead.
I feel like I'm on Jeopardy now. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kristin Hall. I live at 4208 Oak Forest Drive. I purchased that home almost two years ago to this day. I wanted to live in Oak Forest Hills for two reasons. One is to be close to family, identical twin, that we often get confused.
I was noticing that.
Noticing that, yes, yes. We're all around the town. The other is because I wanted my daughter to live in a neighborhood that was much like mine growing up. I wanted her to be able to ride her bike. I wanted a neighborhood where the streets were filled with buzzing sounds and sugar highs on Halloween. I wanted a neighborhood where the homes rivaled that of Clark Griswold at Christmas. And more importantly, I wanted a neighborhood where backyards and front yards exist. The truth be told, it's hard to find those in our neighborhoods these days. When I purchased the house, I had some updating done. It's a small ranch. I did some work in the inside. I also enclosed the garage and created a mudroom. In order to do that, I went through all the required steps, permitting, multiple inspections, et cetera, in order to make my home what I wanted it to be. When the freak storm hit in June of 2013, a tree crushed the right side of my home. I went back through that same process, permits, et cetera, to make sure that my daughter's room was rebuilt and my roof was re-put back. Our neighbor Nelson also suffered a tree damage at that point. It nearly crushed his home, and he decided, being a longtime resident, that he was going to rebuild rather than, from scratch, rather than reframe the structure. For him to do that, he's been through too many to count, hearings, proposals, redrafts, et cetera, so much so that it's 18 months later, and he still lives in an apartment waiting for his home to be finished. The major difference in his home that he wanted was to build up and also to add a front porch. That front porch posed a problem, because in order to make sure that a front porch goes into place, the setback needs to be approved by your neighbors. So a five-foot front porch, it created an enormous amount of time for him to get the approval. It seems to me that given that, and given all the hoops that multiple neighbors have jumped through for certain things that we want to do to our properties, that we're even considering, looking at, or were even proposed, a site plan that consists of a five-foot setback on the entire south entrance to our neighborhood on Oak Forest Drive. I don't know what you can possibly put within five feet. The bottom line is there's only two parties that stand to benefit from this proposal and from the development. The developer, who in order to protect their own profit margin and pockets, has no option but to cram as many buildings into that space as possible. And the second is the property owners, they're asking a completely absurd amount for their properties. They're holding all of us, quite frankly, my neighborhood, you, as the city council, the gateway to Brookhaven, and the developer at hostage, all for their financial gain. While 100-plus residents, many that stand behind me today, stand only to lose with this development. I respectfully ask that you decline any rezoning request, any requests to redirect back to the Planning Commission, and any other stall tactics that may come to light, as this has gone on too long, and quite frankly, we want to get back to living in and enjoying our neighborhood as it is today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Alan Mick.
Evening. My name's Alan Mick. I live at 4110 Oak Forest Drive, next to the north parcel of the rezoning area, petitioned rezoning area. I've written several long emails, and I don't want to repeat all of that, so I just wanted to make it a little more concise and make a few of the main points. First, I'm pretty disappointed with the new proposals that came back, which basically takes some townhouses, divides them by three to five feet. We still have the situation where we have the sides of these high, tall, thin units facing the streets, facing the side yards, the rears of the building facing other side yards, the side of my house. The same thing is what Kristin was saying. When I built my house, there was even a discussion at the end whether it was 45.5 feet or 40. I was behind the 40 feet, and I went through all types of discussions, and just to keep my house where it was, I mean, we've all done that with the zoning that was there in place that time. As I said, mostly, it's the orientation of the streets, and the rest of the homes are these improper setbacks, the rear decks, the sides facing streets and side yards, and also, in my case, a road that's actually dead-ending in my side yard by the side of my house, and for the access to these buildings. I realize this is a business. I personally love construction. I've built my own house seven years ago. I've built about 12 over the past years, and it's a project. It's a business for Rock Haven. These guys are going to come in, spend 12, 18, I don't know how many months to build it, develop it, and then they're off to the next venture. And then we sit with it for decades, I mean, this type of development. So that's basically a quick summary, and I would like to again ask the city council to deny this petition for zoning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Clay Robertson.
I'm Clay Robertson. I live at 4269 Ashwoodie Trail. I've submitted written materials, and I'm actually, I want to congratulate the city. Before I came here today, my family was sick last time, I couldn't make it, but this afternoon, I watched the whole meeting online. I want to congratulate the city for their transparency. So I'm confident you've read all our written materials this time. But I want to comment on a couple of things that Mr. Dillard said about this being a significant change. This is a very insignificant change. They've put a little window of air in between the units, but they've gone from 32 to 29 units. These are, it's essentially the same plan. Even their own revised site plan that we've been provided with still calls them townhomes. So these are, these are single-family homes in name only. These are not part of the neighborhood. I watched the comments that yourself, Mayor, you made about this needs to be, this needs to be part of the neighborhood. The site plan is still not part of the neighborhood. It's an inward-facing, it's its own self-contained neighborhood. The density that they're proposing is 5.6 and 6.44. The density in Oak Forest Hills is 1.45. All the Murphy-Candler Lakes District is, Nancy Creek is 1.79, Ashford Forest 2.22, Kennerberry Hills 1.55. They're asking for four and a half times the density of the neighborhood that they're going to be within. That's just not reasonable. That's, and it'll result in nearly a 30% increase in the number of homes in our neighborhood. In reality, this is not even a scaled-down project. Everybody left the last meeting understanding that this project would be scaled down. It's gone from 39, 32 townhomes that they were estimating at a price point of $400,000. Now it's 29 single-family homes at $500,000. So it's gone from a $12.8 million job to a $14.5 million job. So incredibly, they've actually increased the scope of the plan. And I've tried to understand why we just have such a disconnect from what our neighborhood envisions and what the developer envisions. I went to the meeting that we had with the developer and Mr. Dillard, and I don't bear them any animosity, you know, I happen to like the developer. I think they're good guys, they're trying to make a living. They just don't see things the way we do, and we live in the neighborhood. But the question was asked of me at that meeting, "Clay, why do you even care? You live at the back of the neighborhood." And that stuck with me for a couple of days, because I just thought that question was so naive. But I had to think about it, and I thought, you know, these guys don't build homes, they build houses. People build homes. People, they certainly don't build neighborhoods. People like Kristin Hall, who just got up here, she builds a neighborhood. And we're proud of our neighborhood, and we think the city of Brookhaven is proud of our neighborhood. All the neighborhoods in the Lakes District, if you look at the city's comprehensive plan, which I know you all have, it's all about preserving the single-family neighborhoods. 29, if you want to call them single-family homes, jammed into a small acreage like this does not preserve the single-family neighborhoods. In my opinion, Murphy-Candler, the lake, the ball fields, that's all driven by these single-family neighborhoods. Mayor, I've seen you there playing ball with my, your kids play ball with my kids. I think that these neighborhoods is what drives what's great about our area and what's great about our community. And we trust that you'll follow the comprehensive plan and you'll deny any further deferral of this request.
Thank you. Next.
Alan Cole.
I just have to make a comment. When are you not going to come to anything without a Florida Gator shirt on?
Well, actually --
I'm passing ordinance against you.
You don't know. I went to the meeting that Clay and I went with Doug, and they, and I didn't wear a Gator shirt, and I was commented, like, who are you? So then I thought, I have to wear it, because --
Making me mad.
That's it. That's good, though. I thought, well, I'm upsetting only one up here, I think. I think I'm right with that. I think everybody else has another alliance.
Oh, he went to pansy school.
But I'm Alan Cole, 4219 Ashwoodie Trail. And yes, and in Montgomery School, all the kids call me Gator anyway, so I gave up. So that works for me. And, but what I'd like to comment is, for 30 years here, I've heard that the myth is that R100 zoning doesn't work at our entrance. But the fact is, for 30 years, it's worked great. The home that was destroyed by trees, they built a new home. They didn't even hesitate. They built a new home. We thought they'd leveled a lot and kind of complained they couldn't build. They didn't. They built it, they rented it. We've had three homes since the last meeting that sold for over $700,000 on the north side of West Nancy Creek coming up. Y'all said, people are saying they don't want the homes. Well, they were sold. And people, and they face Ashford Dunwoodie. You can build 12 homes on this land and not come to this commission if it's R100. Only four of those homes would necessarily have access to Ashford Dunwoodie. All the rest would have access to our street. And if it was sold in a conglomerate, they would all be on our street. So the myth is, it's just a myth. It's not there. R100 works, we're happy with it. The landowners aren't. For 30 years, and this is for you, for 30 years, they have never, ever had an individual home go for sale in this group. Not one time. And if they had, they'd have been bought, and you'd see a mansion sitting there. And there's been offers on two of the homes I know about that, for $300,000, that were turned down. So it's a myth that single-family homes can't be built there. They should be built there, they'll fit in our neighborhood. Probably with just a minor variance would be it. And our neighborhood would love it. But we've waited 30, 40 years, and we can wait two or three more years for these landowners to understand it's not going to go for a million an acre. And that was kind of the comment of the last meeting here, it's a math problem. And at $500,000 or $600,000 a lot, you can't, that won't sustain a single-family home. At $300,000 a lot, they'd be gone tomorrow. And the county values them at 280, you ever take? So we want denial. We're tired of the dog and pony show. We'd like to see single-family homes. Thank you.
We have two rings and then the bell to really, I like that. So the applicant gets another minute added to their time if they have. Are there any more, were there any more citizens?
Yes. We've already had one public hearing.
Do you have those in favor? Are there, are there folks? I'd like to give people a chance to talk, you know, and if we can extend time for, you know, maybe just five minutes, in five minutes, rather than 10 in 10. I know we want to move through this agenda, but a lot of folks here, and I want to have, let them have their say. Is there, I'd like to extend five minutes for each side. All right. We don't need a motion for that. Do you? Okay.
We still have -- Yep.
We'll give them five more minutes, too.
I don't have anybody in favor.
All right, so we'll extend five minutes for each side. Is there a motion for that?
I move that we extend the time five minutes for each side on the public hearing.
And I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're going to keep it at five minutes. All right.
Scott A. Bear.
How many people do you have, Kathy?
Okay. So minute and 10 seconds apiece, 15 seconds apiece.
Good evening. My name is Scott A. Bear. I live at 4195 Oak Forest Drive. So again, thanks for listening to our repeated arguments to oppose this. I am in opposition of this. I've been in my neighborhood for 10 years. I've watched, you know, families move in, families move out, and continue to see rebuilding of, you know, large homes. I live next door to Nelson Konsumi, who is building, you know, a really nice, beautiful single-family home, and would like to see more of the same. So thanks for your attention, and hopefully you guys will vote in opposition with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. A. Bear. Next.
We stop the clock between visits.
Ashley Owen Avart. I think she just handed you a letter.
I just changed mine to a letter.
Was that pronunciation right?
Avart.
All right, Avart, okay. Not like A. Bear, not Avar, Avart. All right, next.
Emily Joy Taylor.
Thank you all so much for your service to our city and for listening to us this evening. My husband and I moved with our son over 10 years ago to 4181 Oak Forest Drive. Having relocated here from Charlottesville, Virginia, we were eager to find an established neighborhood that felt like a real neighborhood, rather than some hastily thrown-together developer's idea of what a community might look like. We had such luck in finding in a wonderful neighborhood, where accessibility to my workplace pairs unbelievably well with access to wildlife and to nature. The breathtaking tree canopy for which we're known, Oak Forest Hills, so effectively insulates us from 285 and Highway 400 that you can barely hear them, even in wintertime. This proposed zoning change at the top of our neighborhood threatens everything I value about this neighborhood. It also clearly conflicts with the overall vision statement of the comprehensive plan, as well as the city's pledge to be a community that preserves the unique character and history of its neighborhoods, parks, and natural assets. Oak Forest Hills is a model Brookhaven neighborhood, as evidenced by the abundance of recent single-family new home construction just launched within the next, within the last six months. If these lots went for sale for single-family, they would sell, and lovely homes would be built, but we've never had the opportunity. I thank you for listening. I do fear that this is not being done entirely in good faith. We've really tried to meet with them. We're not trying to be unreasonable. We just want our neighborhood to stay a neighborhood. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
That concludes opposition.
You have an extra five minutes that you don't really have to use.
I don't think you got to worry about me using it all. You know, I think I told you the last time, I feel like I'm in a time warp. Oak Forest Neighborhood's been fighting development in this area for over 30 years. They fought everything we ever tried to do across Ashford Dunwoodie, on Perimeter Summit and Lake Huron and all that stuff, along with other neighborhoods. Their objections then have been proven wrong, and their objections now, relative to this development, will be proven wrong. I think Jim and John Coward and John Whelan would resent the fact that they're accused of building houses and not homes. When you look at who developed this community in the '60s and '70s and '80s, it was, it was a group of builders that built in Dunwoodie and built in North DeKalb County. They built homes. We met with these neighbors several times. They'd said, "Come back with a cluster product." They didn't say they wanted 14 units, they didn't say they wanted 15 units, they didn't say they wanted 30 units. They said, "Come back with a cluster product." That's what we've done. We've come back with a cluster product. This is a single-family detached home that is not in any way going to adversely affect the value or the, or the ability of these homeowners to enjoy peaceful and quiet parts of their neighborhood. We front a major road. This is a collected corridor. This is not a residential street. And as a result, your comprehensive plan recognizes that you provide some transition. We're consistent with the recommendations of your comprehensive plan. And 29 versus 15, I think at some point, you got to say, you know, where is that number just an arbitrary number? Where does it really relate to the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare? And one of the reasons we want this to go back to staff is we want to look at the conditions that staff has imposed on the 36, not the 32, the 36 site, unit site plan, and see what conditions still apply, because basically, we're, we're in support of what staff has suggested. And when you look at, when you look at the overall use of the property, and when you look at how we provide transition to established neighborhoods from major corridors with a residential product, not a non-residential product, as I've told you before, I can't tell you the number of times I've had people call me wanting to zone this property for a gas station, or office, or whatever. This is a good solution for you. And I don't have to tell you, your obligation under the law, Tom can certainly do that, but I think that we've got to look at the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare, and the right of the property owner to use this property for a lawful purpose. And your, your ability in exercising your discretion, and we, we hope that we can help you make a decision that will be easier, because Oak Forest isn't the only neighborhood that's concerned about this. The only folks you've heard from tonight are Oak Forest residents, okay? There are other folks that live in this area that are concerned about this zoning, and we're meeting with them. And our objective is to come to you with some support. I think we'll get support of your staff, which is important, but I think the bottom line, the bottom line is, is this a reasonable use of the property? Does the property as currently zoned have a reasonable use? And is there a density then that allows the property owner to have a, have a reasonable use of their property? Doesn't mean it's the highest and best use, and that's not what we're asking for. We're just asking for a reasonable use. We ask that you defer this, give us a chance to meet with staff, give us a chance to continue to meet with the neighborhood. Mr. Coles and his group have pretty well drawn a line in the sand, but I'm going to tell you here, and I'll tell him, you know, we're always available to sit down and discuss I think we'll get support of your staff, which is important, but I think the bottom line, the bottom line is, is this a reasonable use of the property? Does the property as currently zoned have a reasonable use? And is there a density then that allows the property owner to have a, have a reasonable use of their property? Doesn't mean it's the highest and best use, and that's not what we're asking for. We're just asking for a reasonable use, we ask that you defer this, gives a chance to meet with staff, gives a chance to continue to meet with the neighborhood. Mr. Coles and his group have pretty well drawn a line in the sand, but I'm going to tell you here, and I'll tell him, you know, we're always available to sit down and discuss the merits of the case. Thank you.
Doug, I have a couple of questions for you.
Doug?
I know saying that Ashford Dunwoodie is not a residential road, I think, living here all my life, you know, that's the one thing that's everybody's had a fear of, that it would not be a residential road, that somebody would foreland it, but in our mind, Ashford Dunwoodie needs to always be a residential road, always, because that protects the integrity of our neighborhoods, the R-100 and the R-75 and the R-50 and the R-25. I, I just think that, you know, that statement, in my mind, I just have to disagree with that. And I think, I know what your point was, was about it's, it's off the interchange and you need a transition, I understand that. And I know it's a collector, but I, I think that you might poison the well a little bit by.
Well, let me just say, I'm not trying to say that there are not residences on Ashford Dunwoodie Road, because there are. And they're multifamily residential as well as non-residential as well as, but it's not a residential street like the, like Oak Forest Drive. It is an arterial collector under our transportation system, so it does deal with non-residential characteristics as close to 285, which you're well aware.
Right.
And that's where we are, that doesn't mean that it doesn't have residential character down toward Marist and elsewhere. So no, I, I, I don't disagree with you.
Mailboxes and people cutting their grass on Ashford, you know.
Right.
The other thing was, if you, you're asking for a deferral, and I think staff is recommending a deferral. The number of homes at 29 is, when you come back, do you foresee that number changing downwards?
I don't, I don't have authority to say we would change it below what it is currently.
Do you have authority to say that's out of, out of the question?
I'm not going to say it, I'm not going to say anything's out of the question.
All right.
And I'm not going to say that in the exercise of your discretion, you can't give another number, be it more or less.
Right.
And then we would have to determine whether that's right or not. But, but I, I think the thing we've got to guard against is just arbitrarily picking a number with no, with no relationship to, to the underlying property and the value of that property and the people that own it.
Rebecca, did you have a question?
Well, my question was about whether this was the final number, because quite frankly, I guess I had misunderstood your revision to, that it was going to come down even more.
Well, let me just say this, Ms. Williams.
Yes.
He's giving her a look right now.
You know, my husband calls him Darth Vader.
Well, wait a minute, now I got to clarify that. He also, he also, when he found out I was an organic farmer, wanted to do an article that said Darth Vader goes green.
Yeah, there you go.
So, but, but we're not, we don't, we're, we're in a position right now, we're negotiating with ourselves. We did this unilaterally after a meeting, we dropped it, we dropped it almost a third, and we still can't get. I mean, nobody, they're, they're sitting there saying no, 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 and we need some leadership.
I, I personally think you're still, it's still too high of a number. I mean, I'm sympathetic to what I'm hearing. We, I'm personally, and I think all of us are pledged to preserving our neighborhoods and what makes our city so unique. I, I'm, I want this gateway to Brookhaven enhanced as much as anyone. I, I'm actually pretty offended by the rental houses that, you know, are not very attractive right there. But Alan is absolutely right, they stay rented, the one that got crushed by the, the tree was rebuilt. I'm, I'm almost coming around to the opinion that we need to deny you so that you can go back to these owners and say this just isn't going to fly.
But I don't think denial is, is the answer, because a denial, we, we got to wait two years to come back. A denial's not going to give us an opportunity, because the neighbors beat us at that point, so we just, we'll have to go to court, okay? That's not what anybody wants, you know, and what I'm, what I'm going to point out.
What would be the chance that she would go back to the drawing board? Rock Haven makes a great product, they're a good builder, we, we love what they're, what they're, the other work they're doing in Brookhaven. But I think we'd like to, I think the neighbors and some of us would like to see a lot fewer houses on this, on this track. So when they say 14 or 15, I haven't heard any discussion as to how feasible that might be. That's still a whole lot denser than the, what, four or five houses that are there now?
That's something that we can pursue, I'm not going to sit here and tell you tonight.
No, I'm not asking for promises.
I don't have authority to do it.
You go, if you go back.
If you want, if you want to address that at all, not asking you for a number, I'm just asking if they're, if that's hard and fast, or if you have to go back and do some different plans.
Mayor, mayor, I think, I think, I think the message is sent, I don't know to the extent that you should be negotiating this from.
I'm not negotiating, I'm just asking the question. Because that hinges on whether a deferral or denial, I would think, in our decision-making, we have to know, well, if we deny this, or if we defer this, is it going to come back the same number or one more? Or what is the possibility that the number would come down? They're seeking some relief with a deferral, and we have residents here who are in much in favor of denial.
Well, I think, I think the message you're sending is, is if they, if he, if he does not believe that they can come down to the number, and he has no authority, and his client's not here to discuss it with him, there's nothing he can answer.
He's sitting right there.
That's why I was asking.
Jay Maxx, may I just say, I think the message has gotten across, and if they don't do it in the next round negotiation, then I think it's something we could address.
I just assumes what the votes are going to be.
Well, I just want to be assured, I think this is, the mayor's asking too. I, I just want to be assured that if we give you the deferral, that you go back and that we can have a round of productive talks. It sounds like you've kind of come to a bit of an impasse, and.
We've, we've come to an impasse only with Oak Forest. We've not come to an impasse with any other group that we're talking to.
Well, I think you need to worry about Oak Forest.
Well, we're going to, we'll, look, I think, I think Oak Forest is, yeah, I think Oak Forest is pretty well dug in the sand. They're at 14 to 15 units. Our, 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 our hope is that we can work with other neighborhoods and get some support from those other neighborhoods, and we might have a, a different argument, we might have a different discussion. But the, but the, but the thing that I believe the city can do is to provide for, as I said, leadership, maybe it's mediation, maybe it's whatever, we've been the one, because we're the applicant, and I don't have a problem with that, trying to get accord, okay? We met, we met with Mr. Robinson and Mr. Coles, and they came back at 14 to 15. We're at 29. That's where we are.
So if we deferred, are, are we optimistic that there might be some progress?
If you want to let your client say something.
Brad Hughes at Rock Haven Homes, that's not a, it's not a question that can be answered in two seconds.
Sure.
Sure.
Because, you know, staff comments may change, there's a whole lot that goes into saying whether or not, you know, we can do, you know, five or 10 or 15 or stay at 29. And so it's a, it's a long process that, once we meet with staff, get their recommendations, get their conditions, and go back and meet with other neighborhoods, see what they say, and if, at the end of the day, like I told Clay, and I told Mr. Cole, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We'll pull the application and move on down the road. So I'm not going to continue to sit here and beat my head up against the wall just for the heck of it. So we're all trying to come to a common ground here to make everything a win. I think everybody knows that, that's what, you know, we're, and, you know, so if it doesn't work, you will just pull the application and move on, but I would, you know, like respectfully request, you know, the deferral to give us time to work on that incident. You know, after meeting with all the other neighborhoods, it's either going to work or it's not, and, you know, so we'll be here in March, and we won't be here in March.
All right, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, because nobody wants to waste time on this. These folks don't want to waste time, I don't want to waste your time, time is money for you guys too. So if I think we can have some productive talks by sending you back, I'm, I'd be willing to support that.
Brad, what's the other question?
Your question for the.
Yeah, one quick question.
Residents or Doug?
Yeah, Doug, and or the developer, the applicant. Do you have a sidewalk here on, I'm not sure I see a sidewalk drawn in.
I think there's, I can't remember all the conditions that Susan, I think there's a sidewalk, yeah, on, on that side as well, and there's some landscaping.
Right.
There's a turn lane coming, and there's a turn lane coming out of Oak Forest, that kind of thing.
Ben, is that, you doing the five-two, two-foot landscape, five-foot sidewalk, or?
There's conditions associated with sidewalks along Oak Forest as well as Ashford Dunwoodie. In terms of the, the buffer aspect, it comes down to which one is it going to be, an attached or detached product? That's going to determine if a buffer is required or not.
Well, we're looking at detached here, so.
So if it's detached, and if that's what the applicant is going to proceed with, then there is no requirement for a transitional buffer.
You're talking a buffer between the neighborhood and this.
Between the neighborhood, but they're still going to be required to.
Do sidewalk.
Install a sidewalk along both street fronts, that is correct.
Is, is there any kind of, is it just a straight five, or you're going to landscape? Is there a plan for Ashford Dunwoodie at all?
I have nine, talked about the turbine gutter and sidewalk, it's a five-foot sidewalk.
Five foot, but no landscape buffer?
And there's a landscape too.
Is there any kind of right-of-way issues, so there, I mean?
Yeah, it, this is, so it states condition number one, or public, public works comment number one, the existing right-of-way Ashford Dunwoodie road along the subject property is 60 feet wide, 30 feet from center of road, Ashford Dunwoodie is classified as a major thoroughfare, which requires a right-of-way width of 150 feet from center of road, so there's going to be a requirement for dedication of right-of-way.
And that's okay with us.
If traffic gets any worse, that's the only way people are going to be able to get around out there.
Got to do something.
Because you got to get some alternate people out of their cars. What is the estimated sale price of each of these units?
I'm going to say somewhere between 6 and 750.
Okay. Or 5, somebody said 5, 4.
It's a product, it's a product of development cost and what they're having to pay for the land.
Right, right.
I mean, under the current site plan, it's definitely, we'll have to be in the sixes and go up from there. It won't work, or any other way. So, and it's going to be a nice product, it's going to be, you know, price point, there'll probably be more per square foot than other houses. We built inside there, we bought a lot from Clay Robertson, where he lives, built a house on it and sold it in 800, so. I mean, we, we have, you know, stuff in there, so, you know, it's, you know, we build in that neighborhood, and it, but it's not the same as being back in, on a, you know, single lot back in there, it's nowhere near the same as being at the corner of this intersection. The, you know, lane use, you know, calls us update units an acre, we're under that.
And the square footage of these units approximately?
3 to 3,500, so.
Thank you.
When you go back to the drawing board a little bit more too, I, I hope you'll take into, into account the issues that they have about setbacks and the sideways facing the streets.
The only, only variance on a setback is on the lower half, where there's 20, 20 units is the setback. All the other setbacks should be within the, within code, within the zoning. That's the only variance, is asking for that to be reduced down to five, everything else is per zoning code.
Okay, just, as you know, this is a gateway development, and we really want you to bring your best game.
Bates's, you know, question, I mean, along Ashford Dunwoodie, we've already, you know, shown the trees that you've, you know, requested. And it'll be heavily landscaped, with, you know, it'll look beautiful up and down there, it's going to have to, so.
Thank you, does anybody have more questions for the applicant? Does anybody have any questions for any of the residents who spoke? Okay. Thank you. Sorry, sir, we, we, I'm sorry, I understand. If you want to come into the podium and give your name and speak. You've got about 30 seconds left on the.
Out of respect, he was speaking about my house.
Give your name.
My name is Jim Feeney, I live at 4311 Oak Forest Way. I live in that subdivided piece of property that he was speaking about, and I did not pay $800,000 for that home. And, and I'll tell you, we moved here from Memphis, we looked at 67 houses, okay? And you think this is tedious, my wife had to find the right home in the right neighborhood. And unfortunately, what they're proposing, and I don't know if you've been up and down that street at school time for traffic, for mayor in Montgomery, what they're proposing is, is going to be crazy. So I just, you know, wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Now, that's a man with patience.
You have to, sir, we.
Alan.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Close the public comment.
We can't have comments from the audience, we just can't ever, I've never accepted that, we can't do that. Got to maintain that, all right? Is there a motion?
I'm going to move that we, what's the number on this one, RZ 14-16?
We need to close the public hearing?
Close your, close the public hearing first.
Public hearing is closed, okay.
Do you want to go ahead and take both of them, since they're both related?
Yes, 16 and 17.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that for ordinance 2014-11-05, RZ 14-16, and RZ 14-17, I move that we remand it to the, to the Planning Commission and bring it back to City Council for our March 24th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just hope that we'll have some productive talks, that we'll take into account the many, you know, good constructive comments, that we can continue to, to have some positive dialogue and come back with, with a product that really we can all be proud of.
I would just, as I always do, I always encourage people to, you know, open their minds and talk to folks, talks amongst one another, one another, talk with the applicant, talk, applicant needs to talk with the residents of Oak Forest and other neighbors, but Oak Forest is the one that's be primarily impacted by this development. And just leave snide or bitter comments at the door, and just come in and try to work something out if you can. You might not be able to, but try to do it in a neighborly way, in a civil way, that's all I ask. All right, anybody else have any comments? All right. All in favor of the motion to remand to the Planning Commission signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion carries. We'll take a one-minute recess while folks exit. I guess mayor's opening remarks. I just wanted, I just wanted to thank everybody, you know, my mother passed away over Christmas, I wanted to thank everybody who expressed kind words and thoughts about my mother to me, and appreciate it. And wanted to point out a couple of folks in particular, Donna and Adrena Richard, it's, my mother would have loved this, sent they, got something in the mail when we got back from the funeral. They planted a tree in my mother's name in the Holy Land, and that would have been, she would have, that would have tickled her pink. And so I wanted to publicly thank the Richards for doing that. And, and Mike Hassenger also, his, he and his family donated some funds in my mother's name to Breast Cancer Research. So that's why I'm wearing the pink ribbon, and I just want to tell everybody, staff included, appreciate the thought, the kind thoughts and words during that difficult time, so thank you. Thank you to the post for running my mother's obituary for so long, I appreciate that. All right, agenda announcements, we already have done those, haven't we?
I do need a motion from the council to amend the agenda as I stated at the opening.
There's a motion to amend the agenda as stated by the city manager?
Yeah, I think I wrote it down, all right. So I move that we amend the agenda to add consent item number five, to add employee raises to the consent agenda as presented in our work session.
Number six.
Oh, sorry, sorry, correct that, consent item number six. To add employee raises to the budget as presented according to the plan in the work session. Also remove item number two from the reports and presentations, and to move old business item number one, two, to, to new business, item number two.
You're second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, public comment? Terrell Carstens?
Terrell Carstens.
Terrell Carstens, 2444 Ousnola Drive, speaking as a private citizen only. I just had a, a quick request that I'd like for you guys to visit here early in the year, is if we could get vending machines here, one here at City Hall, with some snacks and stuff for us. And in the parks, if we could get some vending machines at the three rec centers right now with some Gatorade and protein bars and some healthy things for the kids, I'd appreciate if you guys would look into that.
Always have good ideas, Terrell, that's a great idea.
We really need some Gatorade and stuff at the park.
Gatorade.
Yeah.
Wheatgrass, things like that.
All right, you're coming around.
Joe can start the, start the, you should have a little section reserved for yourself in each vending machine.
Ronnie Mayer.
All right, Ronnie. That's a good idea, staff, by the way, so we can facilitate that.
There have been some vendors that have already been visiting with the Parks and Rec Department, and also with Brad.
We talked about youth entrepreneurs also, remember that?
Pardon me?
Youth entrepreneurs.
Yes, absolutely.
Having the kids get involved and helping to maintain the parks with vending machines.
Good evening, how's everybody tonight? We've got a new year going on, I've got a few items here I just want to discuss. We hear through parks that y'all are going to hire a consultant at a couple hundred grand to help draw up a, a plan or something. I could be wrong, but if we, I would rather not hire a consultant to do anything for our Brookhaven. our Brookhaven parks, especially Asher Park, or the ones on the, as we call the other side of the railroad tracks. I'd rather spend the money ourselves. Georgian Hills Park needs a new culvert on, at Bragg Street to get the water out of there when it rains real hard. And once we get that done, then you could do plans in the park area there. If not, anything you build, when it rains hard, is gonna flood there. So we need to really get a few of the, the players who have ate, drank, and slept these parks for years. I mean, I know y'all have got good groups doing it, but he needs, some of us old guys that really know what's going on, you need to consult with, and we're free.
You coming to that?
Oh, yeah, we're free. And we've had a city here now for two years. I don't know if it's a power play by anybody, but I still wanna plant my trees on Peachtree. We spent a lot of, a lot of money on the cherry trees. I hope we don't see the cherry trees in a year and a half just die off. I hope we have a plan who's gonna water them. But I have free trees to plant on Peachtree, and I keep getting phone calls about the old holes that were dug there. And I can get the police to block off a lane. I've got free trees, free. And I've got an eye for planting. So if y'all just give me the week and the yay, it'll go. I'll plant Peachtree from Dresden to Osborne, and I'll make you very proud, and it's not gonna cost you a penny.
Thank you.
And I guess, and then I reserve my little extra time left to help y'all with this, the rec ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Betsy Eggers.
Marie, if you will get with Jerry about the culvert at Jordan Hills, Jordan Terrace, that would be a good product, immediate project, I think we could, we could do. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Betsy Eggers with the North Fork Connectors. We suggest that we change names. For a linear park of this scope, we need a big, easy-to-recognize name, rather than the North Fork of Peachtree Creek Park or Pathway Greenway. It should simply be, begin Peachtree Creek, whatever. Our organization will continue to use the name North Fork Connectors, but we hope the city embraces the idea of the use of Peachtree Creek as the primary name of this visionary place to come. Can be Peachtree Creek Greenway, and is one idea. And we will continue to poll people and find out other ideas that, that we will come forward with, some ideas. Second, the North Fork Connectors publicly announced their unanimous support of the three percent increase in the hotel motel tax. For the sake of clarity, although not legality, we'd like to refer to it as fee to promote tourism, three percent. Furthermore, the North Fork Connectors advocate that one hundred percent of the three percent increase be fully allocated to new park procurement and construction in the fourth district. Ironically, not one of our board is in the fourth district, but we see that this is a need for the whole of the city, and it will be a regional park. So that's why we are not advocating money of this magnitude go just to here and here and here, that it needs to really, on your part, you need to commit to the linear park, the Peachtree Creek Greenway. It will have a regional draw. It will help fill Brookhaven hotels and become a regional attraction, as the Beltline has become. Once the park is built, the three percent fee to promote tourism increase can go fifty-fifty to maintenance of the linear park and other city parks as well. Only one of you on the council represents the fourth district, but all of you have recognized the importance of this legacy park. The Peachtree Creek Path Parker Trail, all of the four consultancy companies embraced it in their recent reports. This is an easy funding choice, but it's up to you five to do the right thing. A hundred percent going to the Peachtree Creek Greenway until it's fully built. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next?
Very good suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah.
Catherine Bernard.
Thirteen twenty-one Oaklawn Avenue. And I'll, I'll try to be brief, but I was troubled by the three hundred and thirty-page agenda packet to try to get through today. And what I wanted to talk to you about is that it feels like people are being discouraged from participating in Brookhaven city politics, simply because of the volume of information and new ordinances that we are constantly being faced with. It seems like at every single meeting we have, there's some new ordinance. Today, we've got several on the agenda that we have to look through. And it's prohibitive for people to get involved. It's difficult for them to, to pick through all this new legislative material, and a lot of people simply don't participate. We saw a lot of people just leave after, after the first item on the agenda tonight, because unfortunately, you know, they have babysitters to get back to. They don't have time to, to spend all night here at a city council meeting. And frankly, you know, the, the people from here up are the ones getting paid to be here. The other people are the ones who are paying to be here. And I think it does show a disrespect for their time when there are continued deferrals and there are continued three hundred and thirty-page agenda packets for us to deal with. So what I would ask is that you would consider maybe taking it down a notch, slowing it down a little bit. We just handled this comprehensive plan back in November, and now we're already coming back to amend it. And I understand that the annexation does create new issues. And I understand the redevelopment issue has to be changed to green space over on Clermont, and that that's actually a desirable change. But it's very difficult for citizens to keep up with what's going on in their city. And I know that wasn't the intent of starting the city. It was to give people more local control and more understanding of what was going on in their communities and their daily lives. And honestly, it seems like the reverse has happened. Now, in addition to keeping up with what's going on in DeKalb, people have to keep up with three hundred and thirty-page agenda packets coming out from the city council every two weeks. Also, there are a couple of issues with, in, things that didn't show up on the agenda. A three percent pay increase for all city employees, that's the kind of thing that people would have wanted to know about in advance, not have added to the agenda at the last minute. That's the kind of thing that people should have the opportunity to discuss. I, I don't know if you plan to vote on that tonight, but you will be voting on it without most people in the city knowing, knowing that, and that's a problem. Most people don't even know how many city employees we have. It's hard to get a handle on that. You know, I, I moved here when this was unincorporated DeKalb, and there were a lot of nice things about that. But Brookhaven is a great place to be. We understand that it's going to continue to get more desirable constantly. But please, I ask you to just calm down on the regulations, calm down on the ordinances. All you are doing is enriching the lawyers. And that's what we see in this engagement with the exhibit A. And I, I promise I will just be very brief. Keep in mind that all of these special projects are adding up tremendously, and all it's doing is creating more work for the citizens who aren't getting paid to be here, who aren't getting paid to pick through. So on the amendment to the comprehensive plan, are we going to be amending it constantly every time a developer asks? So thank you for your consideration, and please shorten up the agenda packets. Thank you.
Next?
There are no others.
All right. I have a question. Was the, the raise for city employees, wasn't that brought up at our last meeting in December?
Yes, it was discussed in December at both the public hearings. And the council directed that the evaluation procedures and process and forms would be sent to you all before you would consider the release of that. So you held that.
Right.
There was quite a bit of discussion on it.
Right.
In order, in other words, to clarify that, that amount is already in the budget.
Correct.
For which there were all those hearings.
Correct. Now, that amount, the three percent was in the budget we passed in December, and then this issue was deferred from the December meeting. All right. Consent agenda.
Yes. The consent agenda has six items, predominantly made up of meeting minutes. The last item was what was amended in the agenda to provide for the release of funds as included in the two thousand fifteen budget for purposes of increases, salary increases. I might mention again for the record, because we did talk about this at the work session, that of that three percent, fifty percent, one and a half percent constitutes the cost of living.
And did we also discuss in the work session that the three percent isn't automatic for everybody?
No, it is not.
Right. It's a...
Right.
Cost of living is, but the rest of it is based on evaluation. All right. Their motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items one through six.
Seconded.
And discussion?
I just want to reiterate what, what you all talked about. This is the, the three percent increase for salaries, which, as was pointed out, was talked about several times in our budget hearings.
And work sessions.
And work sessions, and was passed. What we asked for last time was simply that before we gave any kind of across-the-board increases, that we directed the city manager to come up with a, a performance evaluation policy, which she has, which we reviewed in the work session. And as Marie pointed out, one of this three percent increase that we're, is in, is on the table right now, one point five percent of that is a cost of living increase. And then the rest of it will be, will be, if it is, in fact, even awarded on the employee's anniversary, is determined by this, this new performance evaluation scale that has been developed by Marie and our, and our HR department. I'm quite pleased with this. I think it's, it's exactly what we asked the city manager to come up with. I think we'll refine it as we go forward, as we discussed in the work session. And I think it's a, it's a great step forward in, in having performance evaluations of our, and measurable outcomes for our employees.
Yeah, in concert with that, I mean, the, the budget hearings and the, any, all these ordinances that we have that come up on our agendas, I mean, part of this is endemic to startup, is it not? If we don't have these things in our agenda, we open the city up to liability for not being covered when it comes to having the proper ordinances adopted. Is that...
Absolutely. And remember, some of the ordinances, especially towards the end of the year, the, the last quarter, why there were so many. We had a sunset, if you'll recall. So we did have to amend those and make them more Brookhaven oriented and adopt them, re-adopt them. Because when the city was incorporated, all, all DeKalb County ordinances were adopted. So this is our, our process and our way of going back and amending them. And tonight, that is a reflection of that.
How long will this process go on as far as, you know, we adopted the cab, and we're now going back to make sure they're fit with our city? How long do you think that'll go on? Because it's taxing, not on just the, like Ms. Bernard, but on the citizens, but, you know, we have families and kids, too, and we, it's, we don't like staying here till midnight or eleven o'clock. How long will this drudgery on this end go on?
Well, I would think maybe over the next couple of months. But, but I'd like to make this, this comment. I hope your ordinances never become stale.
Right.
I hope they'll reflect the trends and changes and the desires and philosophy of this council and, and what you do to represent your citizenry, so that if there is a need to change, that you will be open to that and responsive to amending ordinances when, when it's proper.
I'd like to add just a couple points. You know, if there's anybody who would love to see us not have three hundred-page agendas, it's probably the five of us up here. So your comments are appreciated. We hear you. You know, there, there are, there are some responsibilities, though, in running the city, and I, and I really haven't, I think that the city staff is doing an efficient job of trying to process the needs of the city. Regarding the, the employment raises, I think it's important to point out that this is a policy that will be going into effect in two thousand fifteen. It is very much merit-based, aside from the one point five percent increase for cost of living adjustment. And people need to remember that the majority of the employees of the city of Brookhaven are our police officers, some of the most valuable people who are out there protecting and, and putting themselves in harm's way every day for. So it's important that we have good policies that keep those people retained and keep them, you know, as, as happy employees of the city of Brookhaven.
I'll just close by saying that I do agree that we're probably the five that want to see the least amount of paperwork, but we are a city of ethics, and one of our main policies is to be as transparent as possible. And fortunately, with that comes the responsibility that when we do these ordinances, we want to make sure that we have every piece of information that we possibly can provide that would substantiate what it is we're doing in a transparent manner. And then on the pay raise, yes, we definitely do not want to be a runaway government where money is automatically allocated to people every year, year after year. So we're, we've instituted this policy here with the assistance of our city manager. We'll do the accountability and a performance criteria for evaluation purposes that will purposefully address what an adequate and earned increase would be in addition to cost of living increases. So I'm pleased that we are moving along, and I'm very, very confident that this whole process will get even better as we finish, as we go through two thousand fifteen. And I look forward to revisiting this in two thousand sixteen.
All right, any more comment or questions? All in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right, the motion carries. Announcements?
We have none.
Just that, again, the Park and Brookhaven meetings, mentioned that before, but also that I want to let everybody know that the cities, your electeds and staff will be undergoing training tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Ten AM?
Ten AM, to further our, Joe, you want to talk about briefly what it is that we're doing tomorrow?
Yeah, we've got, we are the first certified city in the state working with the governor's office for family and children for the prevention of sexual exploitation of children. And we have Street Grace coming in tomorrow, who is the, one of the strongest advocates in professional organizations in the state, coming in and putting on the first training, which should be the first of many, and our objective is to train, at this point, city staff.
Okay.
Do you have any comment to that tomorrow?
No, we had GBI actually training today, and they're coming in tomorrow for the whole police department.
Okay. We'll have further announcements on this in time, as this program expands into other parts of our community and objectives and what we hope to achieve, and the example we hope to set for the rest of the state and other cities to exemplify what this great community of Brookhaven is doing.
So the Not Buying It program?
Not Buying It, right.
All right, next, reports from Jennifer Harper?
Yes. Item number one is the presentation by Jennifer Harper from the PCID, seeking support on a grant application that they are making.
All right, go ahead, Jennifer.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having us. And I appreciate the opportunity to share another exciting project. We're constantly looking at ways to improve traffic in pedestrian facilities and perimeter. And we're here tonight seeking your, your support for our grant application coming up for the Atlanta Regional Commission in two thousand fifteen. Do you have the...
She's there.
Okay. And I, I'm here on behalf of Avon. I know she would rather be here making this presentation to you this evening, but her time commitments are, are not gonna allow her to be here, so you are stuck with me.
You're always welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. And I am just a mile from home, so I'm, I'm glad to, I'm glad to make this stop on my way home anytime I need to. I have, we have been working with the Atlanta Regional Commission since the last quarter of fourteen, in anticipation that they would be coming out with a new call for grants. They have pulled together several pots of money, the, the TAP program and LCI program, put it into one pot, and they have put out a call for projects for implementation. So we have put together a project that just touches Brookhaven, which is why we're here tonight. It's on the Lake Huron, where the Flyover Bridge touches down. So that corner of it would be in the Brookhaven section. So we would, we would very much like your support for us improving that area and continuing the beautification all the way up to Peachtree Dunwood.
What do you need from us?
Letter of support.
Yes, can we, Marie, can we get a letter of support to the PCID for this grant?
Yes.
All right.
Boy, that was hard, wasn't it?
It was, okay. Well, um...
What exactly is the improvement?
I think she's trying to get her presentation up on the screen.
I have a PowerPoint to show you.
I emailed it to you.
Stolen.
You got it?
We just got it.
Okay. I'll give a brief overview. I sat in with the, sat on this presentation once before as a liaison to the Development Authority. It's a good presentation, focusing on pedestrians, bike paths, connectivity within the whole PCID region. It's, I think, very focused around quality of life for the people up there, and also reducing traffic and providing alternative modes of transportation. So that's my two cents in a nutshell.
All right.
Let's see how long it takes you, Jennifer.
All right.
Oh, really? Okay.
Scroll.
Here, just on the center, scroll.
Okay, that's fine.
Next one?
Next.
There we go.
No, that's not it. This...
Is it a different presentation?
It is a different presentation. Becky emailed... Becky emailed it.
You want to just tell us about it, what exactly?
It's not the one we had at the Development Authority?
Actually, no.
Can I give you this handout?
Sure, that'd be great.
Yeah.
We're, we're familiar with this, but I am.
While Jennifer's handing that out, I'm just going to give her a big thank you to the PCID and to PTOP and to GDOT for all their assistance and help on the intersection fix at Ashford Dunwoodie and Johnson Ferry Road. I hope you all have had a chance to drive through it. I think it's working marvelously.
Yeah.
We've had to have some relearning by our drivers, but I think we're finally getting it now, and I truly think that it's making a dramatic difference in the traffic flow there. Things are moving.
And I'm a user every day, and it is definitely making a difference in my commute. I can see it the minute I come across the DDI, Ashford Dunwoodie is moving, which was not the case, so it is, it is a, a great improvement.
Can we zoom that a little bit on screen a little?
Can we?
Okay. So the project that we are submitting to the Atlanta Regional Commission for their 2015 call for grants is building off of a project that we already have to improve the intersection of perimeter center of, the intersection of Lake Huron and Peachtree Dunwoodie Road. If you've ever been down the Perimeter Summit Parkway that we just completed by the new hotel in Brookhaven, as soon as you get to the Flyover Bridge, there's a gap there that doesn't have necessarily the PCID standards. And it is a two-lane road, and it's quite frankly a bottleneck in our market. Also, if you're coming Peachtree Dunwoodie from, from the PCID market heading south towards the hospital district, under that 285 overpass is a, is a huge bottleneck. So we had a million-dollar certa grant that we are working under to get that intersection resolved. We just had a PIOH in December, December 18th, where we presented two alternatives. And we have a solution for that area, and we have the money to get it designed and get it through the preliminary engineering phase. When the call for grants came out, we, we wanted to expand upon that project, take it all the way down to Hammond, go from Hammond all the way over to the Dunwoodie MARTA station where the new State Farm property is, and then take the Perimeter Center Parkway section all the way across Flyover Bridge into Brookhaven, and then back around up Lake Huron to complete that entire grid inside the market, make it bicycle pedestrian friendly, light it, and really connect the Medical Center MARTA station to the Dunwoodie MARTA station. In doing that, we're eligible to have MARTA be the sponsor, which gives us the ability to flex the funds over to FTA funds. And what that does is get us out of that planned development process that's required when you get federal funds. Certa funds are not federal funds. The FTA funds would be federal funds, but a different process, a much more streamlined process. That means that we could be shovel, we could be putting a shovel in the ground in 16 on this project. We could fast-track this, make a complete loop inside the market, make that connectivity. We could improve the traffic flow, and all of that without any matching funds required from the CID or from our city partners. So that is the project that we plan to submit. We appreciate your support for this project, which will bolster our case for our multi-jurisdictional collaboration at the CID, which is such a successful model. And we've provided your staff with a draft of that letter of support, which they can provide to you, mayor, for signature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
The next item, we removed item number two, so on to number three, appointment of mayor pro tem.
Is there a motion to table this?
I move that we table the discussion of items three and four to...
Just three, three.
Just three?
My second.
Two, well, do you need to, certain, date certain?
No.
All right, so. If you table, it'll come up for the next meeting.
My second holds.
All right, and any discussion? All in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, number four?
Number four is appointment of Alcohol Board of Appeals. Who's the appoint?
Looking for the names here? All right, I'm going to nominate Mr. Paul Tomaszewski, longtime Brookhaven resident, business owner, to the... No, he's not here. To the Alcohol Board of Appeals. All in favor of his appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. There are a motion to... I made the, I can't make motions. Yes. I think he's replacing Gliani Figundo.
I, I move that we make the changes to the appointments of the Alcohol Board as stated by the mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to, Ms. Figundo did a great job, but she has family and time commitments and work commitments that she felt she couldn't fulfill her commitment effectively. So we appreciate her service. She did a great job, and we're going to welcome Mr. Tomaszewski to the Alcohol Board of Appeals. It's a very important board, as we found out this past year. All right?
All those in favor?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right. Next one?
The next item is initiation of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. We do have our consultant, Amanda from Jacobs, here this evening. She'll make her presentation.
If you can ju, give us just a minute, we need to pull up the PowerPoint.
All right, it looks like we're ready to go. Good evening, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be back here, since you all adopted your Comprehensive Plan in December. Since that time, some important amendments have been brought to the attention of you all through the public and city staff, and we've been brought in to help you all look at making those amendments to the plan. And so tonight, I'm going to very briefly highlight what those proposed changes are. There's really three major areas that we're looking at changing. One is the addition of the newly annexed areas, the Children's Healthcare of Atlanta and Executive Park areas on, on the southern side of the city. We're also looking at making some adjustments to four of the, of the 13-character areas, and then also making a modification to the priority redevelopment parcels map, and I'll talk about each of those a little bit more moving forward. So the first character area we're looking at making changes to is the Historic Brookhaven Character Area, and here is what is existing in the plan. You can see the character area extends down Mayberry Road to the Peachtree Road Corridor, and it also extends a bit down Fuller Road into the Osborne, abutting the Osborne Character Area. The overall vision for the area is staying the same, but I do want to point out that there are currently in the existing adopted plan two gateway areas that we talk about at Fuller Road and Northern Mayberry Road. Those areas are different from the National Register Historic Districts. So those relate specifically to the edits that are, are being proposed, which are on the next slide. So one of the changes that is proposed is to remove the reference to specific streets. We talk about Mayberry Road and Fuller Road as gateways into the district that should be preserved to protect the character Historic Brookhaven, although they are slightly different, so they need to be treated differently. We're talking about removing those references. Also talking about removing Fuller Road east of, you can't see it on that diagram, but east, the creek there is actually the border on the east side of the creek on Fuller Road, which includes Brookhaven Court and Brookhaven Row. They would be removed from this character area and put into the Osborne Character Area. And actually, if you'll go back, a couple other quick edits on that are, we will recalculate the residential densities if that edit's made. In the plan currently, there are residential densities for the Historic Brookhaven Core and the Northern Brookhaven, Northern Historic Brookhaven, and it was suggested that we just do one residential calculation for that whole area. As a consultant, we still recommend that you keep those two areas different, because the Historic Brookhaven Core does have larger lot sizes that match with the historic character, where you, the northern portion is, is newer development. And so using that as a guide, you really want to kind of keep those separate to help with decision-making down the road. The Osborne Character Area, as a result of this proposed change, would also need to be edited. The only change that we're talking about here is adding that Fuller Road portion that was take, that is suggested to be taken out of the Historic Brookhaven Character Area and adding it into the, to the Osborne Character Area, which you can see that on the next slide there. Again, those are two townhome developments just east of, there's a creek there that abuts that area. For the Ashford Park Drew Valley Character Area, we're actually just talking about making an edit to the redevelopment. Currently, it's shown as a redevelopment parcel there on Claremont Road. This is actually the former runway for the airport. The city has looked into the property a little bit more. There definitely are some stream buffer requirements that would apply to the property, potentially some other environmental unique characteristics, but it has been communicated that the priority for the community is for this to be a green space. So the proposed change to this character area is changing that redevelopment property designation to green space, which is highlighted on the next slide. I do want to point out that this also has an edit to the Priority Redevelopment Parcels map, which comes at the beginning of the Community Goals section. That property was also identified as a priority redevelopment parcel, where we identify all the priority redevelopment parcels in the city, so we would be changing that out, and it would be indicated as green space on that map. The last character area, that, that is suggested to make edits to, some of which are, are necessary in the Beaufort Highway Corridor, the, is first of all adding, we're actually talking about remaining the, I'm sorry, I'm rambling on here. We're keeping the overall vision here, but looking at the next slide, we can talk about the changes that are proposed. Same vision, but we're adding in the annexed properties there on the other side of I-85. So that includes the Children's Healthcare of Atlanta property, Executive Park. For now, if you'll recall in the plan, it does say that this, the Beaufort Highway Corridor should be looked at in more detail down the road, and so that would apply to these properties as well.
Can I ask you a question? What is obtained, gotten at SC meeting?
Steering Committee meeting. So right now, or what, what is being proposed is that potentially we might add some more additional implementation strategies and a statement or two to the vision, should it come out of a public input in that Steering Committee meeting to account for those areas there. The other change that would happen is to this, if you'll recall, there are intensity zones indicated on the Beaufort Highway Corridor Character Area, and that's, again, to help distinguish between this fairly large character area with some, some different areas. So we're looking at adding in those newly annexed areas on the next slide as fitting those in with those intensities. So we're talking about high intensity for the Children's Healthcare of Atlanta property, and then medium intensity for Executive Park. There were some other suggestions that have come up, but we just want to make sure to, to point those out to you. One was to remove this, a statement about, about the impact of National Register properties. This is actually in the Existing Conditions Appendix. The statement says that the National Register designation only recognizes the value of properties to a community, but does not protect them. It was suggested that this be taken out. We think it's important to leave it in, because right now, there's no protection of those properties, that has to be done locally, and the National Register doesn't do anything to that effect. It just recognizes it.
Who was asking to take it out?
This was...
Historic Brookhaven, HBNA, Historic Brookhaven Neighbors Association. Their attorney felt that it, I think it was a legal issue that, that was, it was for a legal reason, I think.
Okay.
So I actually, you know, I, I think that, and I think some of the intent of what they wanted has been misinterpreted in these revisions.
Okay.
And so I, I, I'd like, I'm going to recommend that I have a sit-down with, with, with our staff and maybe you, and just to make, and actually invite someone from Historic Brookhaven to make sure that we clearly convey their, their concerns.
Sure, we definitely want what the community's vision is to be captured in any revision.
I, I think some of it, in large part, you've gotten, you've captured most of all of it.
Okay.
Just made me fine-tuning.
Okay.
And that's a great example of why. You know, I don't know that their intent was to diminish the, the historic preservation. It's just it was a legal basis for, for not having that included, which I'm not sure of why.
Okay.
But we'll get that clarification.
Okay. And then here are just the next steps for actually approving amendments and making these amendments, of course, based on any clarifications or adjustments that are needed or that might arise from the public. Part of that was a Steering Committee meeting, which has been requested by the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
This is an action item?
Yes. What we're looking for is council to, to move forward, to direct the, initiating the work.
Yeah. Well, yeah, well, you know, from the email that you had sent, it looked like we've got a little bit of time before we presented, it's presented to Planning Commission.
Yes.
So we, will, can we have that meeting to make sure that we've accurately compiled the concerns of Historic Brookhaven Neighborhood Association?
And I think, you know, and I'd like to suggest, taking it a step further, that that same group, or whoever that representative is from the neighborhood, should also attend the Steering Committee meeting.
Yeah.
And, and share that information as well, so there's a full understanding of...
And right now, we're looking at the Steering Committee meeting. It's temporarily slated for February 2nd.
Okay.
And then after that, we would want to post the document to the web for 30 days, and then we'll, we'll send the ad to the paper to legally advertise it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
Number two?
Mr. Mayor, could you ask for a motion?
On what?
To direct the work.
Direct the work, as we discussed, I mean, is there a motion?
I, I move that we move forward with the plan as discussed and proposed by the city staff.
My second.
Regarding the Comprehensive Plan.
Just makes sure, the caveat about the HBNA.
With, yeah, I mean, the...
The recommendation has it to leave them in, so we need to make sure that, that's distinguished, that we want to hold off on leaving those in or leaving them, or taking them out until we've had such time to...
Right, well, we're just authorizing them to move forward with staff. We're actually going to have to come back and vote on, on the final document. So it, it, through this process, will be subject to those changes.
I just want to make sure that what we just were presented, if the staff's going to be working on that, that, that section needs to be...
Yeah, directed to, to make those changes, according to Historic Brookhaven.
Right. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Okay, item number two is going to be handled in two parts, but two separate ordinances. Ordinance 2014-11-19, that was the item ordinance that you moved from old business to new business. And then the original item number two is ordinance, well, it's an ID number here, 1648, and that is to amend Chapter 15 also. This is non-consensual towing, and 2014-11-19 is the Wreckers Service, the new article. And Emily has that information to present.
This is one of the last ordinances from DeKalb County that we're bringing over. If you'll recall, we looked at a version of this two meetings ago, and this was all in one ordinance, and the council had a lot of comments on it. And so what I did is incorporated a lot of those comments, and I've actually split it into two different ordinances for us to consider separately. The first one... The first one would be ID 1648, which is adopting a new Article 8 to Chapter 15. One of the comments we had last time was that we didn't want to have a license for wreckers, and we only wanted to have a license for wreckers that were located within the city of Brookhaven. Well, anybody that has a business location in the city of Brookhaven's already going to have an occupational license. So, what you have the option of doing, though, just for people who do what they call non-consensual towing, or trespass towing, that's for anybody who comes in and does it against, without the owner's permission, if a private property owner contracts with them, the city of Brookhaven actually has a contract with a tow truck for this service, that you can require them to have an additional license. You're not required to do it, but it's just an option. And if you did require them to have a license, they'd have to come in, and this is only for people who are only going to do trespass towing. This isn't when there's a car accident, this isn't when you call and your car's broken down.
Somebody parked their car on a spot that says no parking.
Right. And there's a lot of regulations, and there's a lot of state regulations and a lot of state law that they would still have to comply with. It's just they would also, if they were going to do it in Brookhaven, have to come in and get a license. And then, the other portion of this ordinance about this license is that you would be able to charge the, you would be able to regulate the maximum rate that they could charge for doing that. That being said, the state already does this, so it's not necessarily a must-have. The state has concurrent jurisdiction, it's the Georgia Department of Public Safety, they make rates every year, but as a municipality, you have the option of adopting lower rates if you wanted to, lower than the state's rates for a tow in Brookhaven. This ordinance is drafted to adopt the Georgia Department of Public Safety rates right now for towing, non-consensual towing, and for storage rates, but it would be something that you could change on a year-to-year basis, or you could decide not to adopt this portion at all. So, that's why we separated it. Go ahead and-
So, basically, if we did not adopt it, that we wouldn't have the right to come back and change the rates later on?
You could come back later if you decided that you didn't like the state's rates.
But we'd have to adopt the ordinance first before doing that.
Right. And you're going to have to, you're technically supposed to adopt the rates every year, if you're going to be lower. Now, Dunwoody and Sandy Springs have this ordinance, they've just adopted the state's rates, very simple, one-liner. They have a preferred wrecker, they only allow one wrecker to come in and do it. This wouldn't be limiting it to one wrecker. City of Atlanta has quite an extensive wreckers ordinance, that they've been sued multiple times, little pieces here and there have been tipped on and off, including one by, once by Mr. Mayor, and he's very familiar with it, that went all the way up to the Supreme Court of the United States, so.
Did he win?
He did win.
All right. U.S. Supreme Court?
Always at the top with the red light and green light.
There you go.
And surprisingly, it has been litigated many, many times. So, this is preempted by federal law, there's very strict things that we can and can't do. The one thing we can do is license non-consensual towing and license the rates for it, but that's about it.
And you said we don't need to do the rates, the state already does it?
You don't have to, the state does it. And so, that's one of the reasons I separated it.
Might as well not do it.
Well, that's up to you, whether you want to be lower than the rate, or give your code enforcement the ability to issue citations in addition to the state.
We have a special expert we want to hear from, if we can hear from Mr. Mayor.
Right.
Subject matter expert.
Come on up, yeah. Some questions or some comments from me on this.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but he's out of order.
Yeah.
Well-
What's new?
They knew you were breaking up monopolies in Atlanta.
We knew that.
In our industry, if you want to call it, have a dark side, this is the impound business brings out the dark side. Case in fact, my mother-in-law had her car impounded in the city of Marietta, but the wrecker service hauled it the other side of Six Flags, where the city of Marietta had no clout, no nothing, and they wanted to charge her like $500 because her wheels were turned, and she had it in park, and she backed it in, and they wanted to get her. And when we sued the city, you know, their, their law is a great law, it's just that all that, you know, they said that a wrecker was a wrecker, was a wrecker, and it's not. If you have your, Brown and Brown has y'all's contract, they are permitted with DeKalb County, they're fingerprinted, everything. I don't know if y'all have, you know, if you're going to do an impound law here, you need to say, it's like it says, if you keep them within a three or five mile radius of their impound lot, that way, if you go to Kroger and they impound your car, you don't have to drive to Six Flags. And then, when you get way out there, you know, and the only thing that I will differ with you is, the state will not go over and slap somebody's hand. They don't really have anyone in their office to do that.
So, you're saying we might need to adopt our own top end?
Yeah, if you say, you know, you got to have your fingerprints, because like I say, the darker side of our industry comes out here. Say, for instance, you have your car in this, say, at one of the other grocery stores, and you left your wallet and your pistol in over here, next thing you know, your car's been impounded, and you go over there-
And what lets you in it?
And your wallet's not there, and your gun's gone. Well, if you've got all the fingerprints of all these drivers who impound, then you can call police and say, "Come fingerprint this car here." You know, if you have no control over these guys, you know, like I say, every industry has a dark side, and I'm not saying it's all that way, just, you know, it just keeps everybody in order.
Well, thank you. If you take those comments as you look out.
Any other comments? You've looked at both of these ordinances?
I think we're doing one at a time.
I looked at, the only thing that I saw is like, say, for instance, if I'm in my tow truck, and I'm driving up Ashford Road, and there's an accident, and I stop, no PD there yet, no fire, I render aid, I block the lane, while I'm blocking the lane, I'm explaining to the people, exchange information before police officers get here, that way you'll have everything. Well, the lady says then, "Hey, you want to tow my car to Curry Honda?" I want to have that right. This is, I mean, I don't think we'll have a problem, but it's, you know, it's sort of vague here that says that if I drive up on the scene, you know, that, you know, I mean, I know everybody, so I don't think I'm going to have a problem. There are the, what they call the gypsy wreckers that just, like I say, they drive around. We hadn't had a problem here. I don't really see us having a problem.
All right.
So, I don't think it's going to be that much of an issue.
All right.
You know, pretty much on the money.
Appreciate it. All right. He says pretty much on the money. All right.
Okay, as far as the fingerprinting, we're not specifically requiring it, but the Finance Department could make that a condition of issuing the license. The states, you still have to have a state license, so you're still going to have to come in. I do agree with Mr. Mayor, it will give you the opportunity to regulate the rates and also cite them in municipal court, potentially.
Let's just adopt the rates the state already has.
Yes, or lower them if you want, just so that you know there's rates, the towing rate charges. Do you want to know what the states are real quick, or do you?
How many are there?
Well, depends on the size of the vehicle, and they go from 150 to 750, 750 is for vehicles of 20,000 pounds or greater, that gives you, but for most vehicles, it's going to be not-
That would be your SUV.
Yeah.
With me in it, yeah.
The short, right. Four classes in the total removal fee goes 150, 250, 400, and 750, depending on the size of the vehicle.
All right. What about the restriction on how far they can tow a car in order to impound it?
The federal law just says that we can regulate the price, but this is for the total price.
Can that be done by, can that be done by the Finance Committee when they do the fingerprint?
The restriction of the total, I would think that that would be problematic because it's pretty specific. It says that we can only regulate, the only thing that's not preempted by federal law is the price of non-consensual towing.
I thought we, we had five miles.
It does provide, it does provide, it does provide for the opportunity to revoke a license if they take it more than five miles.
Right.
Okay. All right. That's what we'll do. All right. All right. You want to do the second one, or you want to do this one first?
We can do the second one. The second one was the second half of Chapter 15. We've moved it to Chapter 17, and it's going to be Article 5, because I wasn't sure if you were going to adopt the license requirement or not. And so, this is, Chapter 17 is the motor vehicles and traffic title of our ordinance. We took out a lot of the regulations, if you'll see that we're in it initially. All it says now is that every tow truck in the city of Brookhaven has to have lettering on the side of the car that is two and a half inches in height, and that's a state law. I think the next one is the one that Mr. Mayor was concerned about, the response to accident scene upon proper request only. It says that you can only come to a car accident scene if you're called by the police department or by one of the people in the accidents, or an authorized representative. The next one, responsibility for cleaning up accident brief, if there's glass, then the responding wrecker has to clean it up, that's also state law. And then, the last one is cruising or parking for the purpose of soliciting towing work, it just makes it illegal to drive around and look for cars to tow.
I remember, and I'd do that, would you?
He's out of order, Mr. Mayor. If I could add one small thing?
Come to the front.
A few of towing services that have the county contracts, if you have an accident, they just take a shovel and shovel the glass in the front seat, floorboard, the back seat of the cars. I think what we need to do is require, and it's not, it doesn't really take that much more, is to require, and they're going to hate me for saying this, but to require the towing service who tows for our city to get a garbage bag, you know, for each accident, and then throw it in the car, because, I mean, I've seen it, matter of fact, I've got pictures of it on my phone, and that's really happened in Brookhaven, and a woman had a wreck, goes, "That glass wasn't even from my car," and they took a shovel load of glass and put it in my car, and just put it in there. And it doesn't take but two extra minutes to grab a garbage bag, whether you have to get somebody to hold you, or whether you fix a little thing on the side of your tow truck with clothespins and say, or a garbage can, extra garbage can, because this is Brookhaven, there's nowhere else, this is Brookhaven. So, we require them to say, "Here, that you have here," instead of taking a shovel and throwing it in the front seat of your car, and, I mean, and-
Can we just say, any operator in connection with that section, that the, any debris cleaned up shall be placed in a container?
I.e., a garbage bag.
A bag or a container?
And not thrown in with a shovel, I mean, because-
A bag or a container?
It's a bag.
Before it's disposed of?
Why not just dispose it in the tow truck?
Yeah.
A garbage can, you know, because, I mean, if you see it, if you see it one time, you go, "This stuff from my car, and they just dumped a whole shovel load, and then antifreeze and oil dry, and they just throw it right in your car," and it's not just here, it's a few other places. And like I say, I live here, this is Brookhaven, this is a whole different ballgame. You know, we just need to do it a little prettier and a little sharper than anybody else. They're not going to like me for saying that, but whatever we need to do.
The oil freeze, the cat litter, or whatever else they put on it to soak up the oil, they're supposed to dispose of that a certain way under the EPD.
Just talking about the glass.
But the glass, we could just add a sentence.
Glass and debris.
Any glass debris shall be-
And oil dry, and oil dry, just add that in there, because you don't.
Well, I'm nervous about the oil dry on the fly, because I think there could be EPD regulations, but the, I've represented a city who's been sued for it before, is the only reason I'm saying bring it up.
Keep it what you're comfortable with, just so we have something.
Okay.
I don't think they would put the stuff in a bag and then dump the other stuff in the car if not, you know, if they have a bag.
That's good info from a subject matter effort.
Thank you.
One, one thing, and we'll give a carrot to the additional recommendations that you've made, Ronnie, and that I remember from our earlier discussions, the police, our chief saying that the weekly reports weren't really necessary. Is that still the case? That, you know, there's a requirement in this ordinance for weekly reports to-
We took that one out.
Okay.
We took out the weekly, that was in the first version, that was one of the things we did take out. However, if they do any non-consensual towing, they are going to be required to do the reports, but that's under state law. They just have to notify the police department with a certain amount of days, so the police can make sure it's not a stolen car, and then find the proper owner.
So, I've got, I mean, I've printed this one off the agenda tonight, that the-
If you're reading the non-consensual portion?
No, I'm in weekly reports. It's the, this is amending records in its entirety, the one you're moving to Chapter 17, Article 5, right?
I've got 17301 definitions.
Well, maybe it's just you had an older version posted on the agenda, but it said 15506, weekly reports, so I guess that's been removed out of the final?
That's from the previous, the old one.
All right, good. I just-
Quickly?
Have that in DeKalb County, because the wreckers companies have to give a kickback to the county for what they jarred, the county wants to know how many cars they towed.
Really?
For the whole business.
Our contract with our tower does require reports, but that's just for city-initiated contract.
Right.
All right. Is there a motion?
Well, now, I'm not sure that I know the-
Just adopt the ordinances as amended.
If I could-
Can I do both of them?
You could do both, or do one at a time, probably would be easier, but just make sure if you, the Chapter 15, Article 8 is ID 1648.
That's the Chapter 15?
That's the one about the license.
Non-consensual?
Yes.
Yeah. I move that we approve ordinance ID 1648, it's the ordinance to amend, this is still Chapter 15, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there an article on this one?
Eight.
Article eight.
It's a new Article eight.
New Article eight, adopting non-consensual towing in its entirety, as stated by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
If we have an amendment in this discussion?
To the second one.
The second one. Is there a second?
No, I'm just doing the first one.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
I move that we adopt ordinance, do you have an ID number on this one, or?
It's ID 1594.
Ordinance ID 1594, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 17, Article 5, wreckers in its entirety, as stated by the city attorney, as an amended in our discussion? Or do I need to be more definite?
If you want to amend to add that debris, then we need to specifically stipulate-
The amendment, the amendment to this is to-
Section 17306.
Add requirement, disposal of debris is done in a marriage of disgust.
Properly contained in a sealed container, or properly removed in a sealed container?
We'll just direct it to you.
Yeah, can I give you a direction to make sure that the intent of that?
You have to have the exact language.
Will give it to us.
"Any debris removed shall be properly contained in a sealed container," I would add that to the last sentence.
Container or bag.
Or bag.
There, that's it.
So, "Any debris removed shall be properly contained in a sealed container or bag at the end of Section 17306."
All right.
I agree with the amendment as stated by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Okay. The next two items are related, so I think they can be discussed together, but motions will be made separately. Ordinance ID 1646 and ID 1650 have to do with granite curbing.
Right.
And Emily has that.
Okay, this is also as a result of our last session, where we adopted the streets regulations as part of the subdivision regulations, and there was concern about the granite curbing. And so, this is an amendment, the first is an amendment to your streets and sidewalk section ordinance, it's adding a new- section ordinance, it's adding a new section twenty-three eight and a new section twenty-three eighty-nine, and this is designed only to regulate existing granite curbing on streets. What it does is says that any person has to get, in addition to any permit, that they're going to have to come in and get permission from the city before they remove or replace any granite curbing, or before they do like landscaping that might displace the curb. It's also making it clear that the granite curbing in the public street right of way is the property of the city of Brookhaven, if you remove it, you can't sell it, you do have to return it to the city unless they give you approval to do otherwise. And then it also adds, number C, a penalty provision of, if you do do this, it's a penalty up to five hundred dollars per lineal foot of granite curb that is removed. And basically, the only purpose of having this ordinance is to try to give the city and code enforcement some teeth to if the curbing is removed, and what they can do to kind of recompensate that and come back and get it. The city already does, in section twenty-three eighty-seven, have a permit, it's called an encroachment permit. Anytime you do any kind of construction where you're moving a driveway or moving curbing, since that's connected to the city public streets, and since it's on the city public right of way, you have to come in and get a permit. But I think not everybody knows that, and so this is just to make sure when we have the granite curbs, that you can clearly point to regulation for the granite curbs. And you'll see, that's the second ordinance, that's relating to that permit that I just said, if you don't get a permit, then the city could come in and fine you for that, too.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
So we're looking at ordinance sixteen forty-six and sixteen fifty, is that correct?
Yes, ID numbers, yes.
Okay. I'll move that we approve ordinance ID number sixteen forty-six, consideration and approval of an ordinance to amend chapter twenty-three, streets and sidewalks, by adopting a new section twenty-three dash eight granite curb and a new section twenty-three dash eighty-nine, failure to obtain permit.
Seconded.
Have any public comment?
Is there any public comment?
None on this one, on the next one.
All right.
Did we pass these together or separately?
Separately.
Separately.
Okay.
No public comment. So was there a second on this?
Yes.
Discussion?
One question, since this is such a severe penalty, five hundred bucks, are there any measures taken by the city to help communicate this to the marketplace as far as?
It's up to five hundred dollars, and that's upon conviction in municipal court, and so the judge is going to have the discretion to set what fine he or she thinks is appropriate.
Still, the builder summit and other, we need to communicate this.
I think, I think...
Maybe a press release would even be good about it.
My understanding is the intention is really to make sure that the granite, if it is disturbed, is reset, and that if it is stolen, because I guess stolen might be a strong word, but that has been happening, that it's been removed, replaced, gone missing, replaced with curbing, and then the city doesn't have the resources to replace it.
And Richard, we have an inventory of the granite curbs in Brookhaven, correct?
We have an inventory of the curbs, I don't know that we know exactly where all the inventory is, but we look at, you know, when we have a building permit come in or a permit come in, we go out and look at it, make sure, confirm whether it's granite or non-granite.
Richard, I asked you, I guess it was a couple months ago, about the paving on Windsor Parkway with the granite curbing now street level, it's down, did we have some sort of requirement, they lifted up and backfilled it?
No, we actually didn't, when we did that, and what, the comment that was occurred, and I checked back with my staff, we had not gone through, we had just literally done the paving that day, and part of the cleanup is to go clean the excess out of the gutter, and we hadn't, they hadn't completed that part of the paving, and that sense has been completed.
But we're not going to pick up the, we're not going to pick up the curb?
We weren't going to pick up the curb, but what we did is we milled down, so what was put back matched what was there before.
What it cost to raise that up?
I think we're running about, when we're spot doing it, it's costing about thirty dollars a linear foot to raise it, but we haven't really gotten prices, if we did a whole road, we should actually be able to get a little bit better price than that, but it runs around thirty dollars a foot, I think it's about thirty dollars a foot.
Get pricing for that, maybe we can do a discretionary.
I mean, we do discretionary already, I mean, we, that's one of the standard work orders that we do, we already do, we probably do about two or three curb adjustment work orders a week, where we have issues and it's discretionary with our maintenance crews.
It looks really weird on Windsor Parkway, it's got this granite, you can just see the top of it.
Yeah, but like I said, when we did this, because we milled, edge milled...
I know, I just wanted you to ask if we could look at that section of Windsor Parkway and just see what the price would be to...
Yeah, we will. And in the future with paving, one of the things we need to do, we didn't do it this time because of trying to get everything done, but one of the things we are going to have to incorporate into our paving plan each year is add money in for potential curb adjustments as part of that and make an evaluation of it.
It would seem it'd be cheaper, once they mill it down, then you've got some two or three inches where now it's exposed, it'd be easier to grab and pick up, so, you know, rather than leaving it where it was previously, if you know when the street's going to be put back, that it's going to be street level, go ahead and pick it up before they put the pavement down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Marie?
I've just heard that.
That's directed to you.
Yes, thank you. In fact, I was going to say that, you know, we'll, upon the adoption of the second ordinance, both ordinances, we'll get out, we blast, and we can do it through social media, we'll also have it on our website, and then we can do a press release, but it can be brought up at the next builder summit.
And this is, you know, an issue I've always been concerned, even when I was a teenager, I remember thinking that granite curbing looks so nice, and, you know, always wanting to make sure we get it back, and then, since I've been mayor, I've noticed it, but then Ronnie Mayer, a couple months ago, probably three months ago, called me and said, "Hey, there's a spot on Windsor Parkway," and you drive by something every day, you just don't, you kind of just don't notice it, and they had taken that one little section, it was about ten feet, where there used to be granite curb, and now it's just concrete, it looks horrible. Now I saw today, there's a slab of granite laying next to it now, it was about five feet long, but I don't know what's going on there, but that was interesting to me.
Well, I've got extra granite, I've got extra granite, if you go to the builder and ask him to do it, he pulls out and changes it, it looks bad.
I just wanted to, you know, this has been an issue I've been concerned about, but I wanted to thank you for pointing it out, and then I wanted to thank Terrell for actually coming to the podium and kick-starting it a little bit, so we appreciate our informed citizens in doing, in helping us, you know, move these things along, so, thank you. All right. Is there any more discussion? All in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the next one?
I'd like to recommend we approve ordinance number ID one six five zero, consideration and approval of ordinance to amend chapter fourteen, section fourteen dash three seventy-six, standards granite curbing.
We have to, we have to have our public comment on this one.
Yes.
And I'll go over it really briefly, this is already part of our ordinance, this is part of the subdivision ordinance. Subsection A was actually part of subsection B, and it said it only applies to subdivisions, and so what we did was expand it to make it clear that these curb standards apply throughout the city of Brookhaven.
That's where they already exist, we're not requiring them.
This is new, new development, and the old, the ordinance we just passed references these standards, so we want to make it clear that it applies not just to platted subdivisions, but to commercial property. The only part that's really an issue is A, and then D is the curbing standards. That's how DeKalb County had it, they mandated either granite curbing or whatever is approved by the public works department, because sometimes there's going to be circumstances where concrete might be more appropriate, or maybe no curb at all, and I think Richard has some comments about that.
I'm in favor of letting the public work, I mean, you know we want granite curbing, but where it's not practical, of course you have discretion, I would think they would have discretion.
Right, and this is really with, because this covers both existing roadways and new roadways, if we mandated, we don't want to mandate granite curb for a new street.
Right.
So that gives the discretion, at my discretion, or public works director's discretion.
Okay, all right.
And they're going to use standards that they apply to make that decision.
All right, thank you. Public comment?
Terrell Carstens. Quick, Terrell Carstens, twenty-four forty-four, Weasne Lott Drive, speaking as a private citizen only. The whole purpose here, in my opinion, is the emphasis on the preservation and the restoration of it, so it's not, I think that y'all have done a great job going with what we've got, implementing it, being realistic and being logical and fair to everybody. One question I had was possibly to help Ben, is that when they come in for their permit, if they identify on the permit request, if they do have any granite on their side or on their property, so that we're not hawking it all the time and looking for it, if they just identify it on their permit request, we'll know, and we can cross-reference it with Richard's report on where there is granite curbing in the street.
Do you have a comment about that, Richard?
Yeah, we already do require that in our site reviews.
Okay.
Fabulous.
Do you get accurate compliance?
For the most part, yeah, we've had a few developers push back on it, but for the most part, most of the developers we've had, builders we've had, have been more than happy to comply with the requirement.
And then lastly, on Connaught Saga, where you just finished paving a month or so ago, there's a strip there now, too, where it's not as if it was removed, it's just once it was discovered that there were curbs there, because there was so much debris out into the street, there is a section missing there, too, so if that could be replaced, that would be excellent. I think it's probably five, six feet of curbing, but it's a...
Obvious.
Obvious, yeah, thank you.
Richard, do you have a comment about that? Okay, okay. All right.
That's that piece that's laying on the street over there.
Any more, any more public comment, Kathy?
No, none.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yes, I thought I made the motion ready, we got to say...
Do public comment, nobody's seconded.
I'll repeat the motion.
Just reference the ID number, please.
I approve, I recommend that we approve ordinance ID number sixteen fifty.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of approval, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Okay, next item is consideration and approval of legal services engagement letter for our city attorney and his firm, Tom Curry and Coleman Tally. You did receive that attachment in your packet. I will just make mention so that there is a full understanding and clear understanding that the retainer remains the same, however, the hourly rate has increased from one fifty an hour to one sixty-five. Also, on the representation and any consulting that we need out of Tom's firm, that would include personnel employment law, we have been working with Lisa Wannamaker and his firm, and her rate is at two hundred dollars an hour. Also included in this is regular office hours here at City Hall, which is always helpful, and we always look forward to Tom coming in.
Thank you.
And it's really on who grabs them first, where he stays the most, but also, the retainer, while it covers much of what you are already accustomed to, phone calls, review of contracts, interpretation of certain legal matters, any matter that will take more than an hour that's part of the retainer will be billed out separately.
Just the contracts.
For contracts.
Just contracts only, not meetings or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay, just for contracts?
Just for contracts.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Marie?
No.
All right. Any just cut questions?
Was there separate billing for contracts in the last agreement?
In the last agreement, no, contracts were included in the, were included in the retainer.
So this is something new?
If it's more than an hour, yes, but I think probably the bulk of what we have done, we worked with. Now, we did, we were able to bill on real estate matters such as the leases of City Hall and those types of things.
That's a separate billing.
And I kept track on the retainer, which I do, as far as the hours, and I was just looking through December, is that the actual fees at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for everything that was spent on retainer services was sixty-two thousand dollars, we were sixty-two thousand dollars in the hole for that, you know, for the year. Now, I'll also say that I have enabled Emily and Laura to participate in, participate in the meetings and things like that, and that's really, that's really in my direction just for the purpose of making sure that there's always somebody behind me that can step in the chair if I'm not here.
Just want to be sure that it's contracts and intergovernmental agreements, anything
more than an hour.
So if it's less than an hour, there's, it's part of the retainer.
All right, any more questions? Thank you for the work you do, and, you know, we'll just probably, you know, you've got a little, a small increase here, we'll just make sure that we're also, all of us more conscious of, when we ask and utilize the city attorney, we need to make sure we walk minor Ps and Qs, and we're spending money when we do that, so.
Well, as you know, the retainer, you can call me anytime, twenty-four seven, and I think you all can attest to my availability, and it will continue that way, and that's all part of the retainer.
Right, and I just want to make sure we understand, we have a duty to make sure we don't overdo it, too. All right, thank you. Any more questions? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the legal services engagement letter for Thomas Curry, Jr., our Coleman Tally attorneys.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to also thank, thank Tom and all the staff at Coleman Tally for the very thoughtful, diligent work that y'all have done for the city. It's been a great benefit, I think, to the citizens of Brookhaven, and I'm sorry that you have had to work as many hours as you have, but, as you have done, but it has been great counsel to the city of Brookhaven and to our citizens.
Well, it's certainly an honor to have had the privilege in order to do this, and while it may be excessive, the entertainment value is very great.
Thank you. Tom, you just stole what I was going to thank you for. Thank you, I want to say personally, thank you, and you've handled a diverse number of issues with a diverse number of personalities, and you did it masterfully, and I'm very thankful for your service to the city.
You're welcome.
All right. All in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Okay, the last item is ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero one dash zero one, and if you'll recall during our budget hearing...
You missed number six.
Municipal elections.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Go ahead. Resolution to fix and publish the qualifying fees for the municipal election coming up later this year.
All right. Susan, you handled this? All right, thank you.
Is state law that you have to agree what the qualifying fee is by February the second? Every city in Georgia's doing that, and the mayor was four hundred and eighty, and the council's three sixty, and we have council member Rebecca Chase Williams, District One, the mayor running, and Bates Madison, District Three, will be, and I have to put it in a newspaper, so it'll be in the champion next week.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the resolution to fix and publish the qualifying fees for the general municipal election for twenty fifteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the resolution signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, number seven?
Okay, now to ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero one dash zero one, this is our tan, I talked with you about that during our budget hearing, hearings in December, and Ed Wall has been assisting me, we did go out for a bid with the local banks, and I'm very pleased to tell you that we did, we were able to shop the rates, and we're looking at a quarter of one percent finance fee for five million dollars, which will be treated as a line of credit, so we won't be taking the entire amount down. Mr. Wallace here, and he can give you a little bit more information, we do have an ordinance, if you will approve this, then we can move forward to schedule a closing.
Quickly?
Hey, Mayor, how you doing? Yes, sir? Do it next week, next Tuesday, I'm thinking.
I'm talking about tonight.
Sir?
I'm talking about tonight.
I don't know if we can do it tonight, Mayor.
We have enough money.
I made your presentation.
Oh, make it short.
Yeah.
So each, each of you have a sheet of paper, it shows you the computation of the bids, you saw how all it is, it's great, I'm really proud of the interest rate, zero point seven five percent, it's the lowest rate I've gotten so far for any tans that I've done so far this year. Interest rates are higher this year than they were last year, yet this year you got a rate of zero point seven five, last year was zero point nine, so you're doing great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for sticking around and being the last participant, we appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Been waiting since the work session.
Georgia Commerce Bank, they bought Brookhaven Bank in twenty thirteen.
Love a local bank.
Yes, it was a local bank, they wanted your business bad.
My ballpark estimation, looks like you've saved us ten grand just on this rebidding from last year's, so that's great. Total interest we're paying on the five million, looks like it's thirty-two thousand or something for the year.[1781.83]
the year.
That's right, sir. And it'll be less than that, because we did it as a line of credit.
Right.
So you only pull it down as you need it.
That's excellent.
And you probably won't need all $5 million, but we put it there in case you need it. Georgia law allow you to bar up to seven. You're only barring five.
Well, I hope residents of Brookhaven hear how well they've treated us and take their business to them.
Georgia Commerce Bank, that's right, and I would like to thank them, because I think they have, they've done a-
Good partner.
A good job of giving us a kind of a sweetheart rate for being a local, local bank.
Let's keep our money in Brookhaven.
Yeah. All right.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
This is their third tan, we know what it is, and we've got a copy over here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
You need a public hearing.
Public, public, public comment?
No comments.
All right.
I move that we approve ordinance 2015-01-01?
And I second.
That's our first one. Consideration and approval of ordinance for providing a temporary loan.
You got the ordinance number right.
You got it. And I second.
All right. Is there a second?
I did.
All right. Any discussion?
Free money.
All right. All right. All in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Next one, other business? Do we have other business, Marie?
No.
Public comments?
Ronnie, Mayor?
All right. You exhausted your comment here, Ronnie.
This is what I like to see, us doing business with folks that live in Brookhaven. Ed lives in Brookhaven, and he spends his tax dollars here, and that's how we should really do this on a lot of our contracts if we can.
Like towing.
I stayed out of it a little last year, maybe next year, year after next. I stayed out of it.
Ronnie, we have a policy that if you're a resident of Brookhaven and you quote on a bid, you get a 5% advantage.
Yeah, yeah.
You think I'm kidding?
That's the truth.
The reason I'm up here now, and I'm not, I'm not trying to throw the chief under the bus, is we hear that we've lost a lot of officers. Have we or no? The word's out on the street that we've lost a lot of officers, and I didn't know when y'all were given the pay raises, if that was a reason we've lost any, or, and I'm not trying to-
Are you done with your comment? You done with your comment?
Comment, comment, please.
If you're done with the comment, then maybe we can talk to the chief about that, but we can't, you can't just engage.
I just hear rumors in the street that we have lost a lot of the great officers. I know we lost our assisted chief, because he's running for sheriff and for scythe. And I haven't heard an announcement from y'all that he's not coming back. I think you need to tell the residents that, and we loved him, and I think you need to tell the residents that he's not here, he's not coming back. And there's just a, you know, like I say, one more time, I want to plant the trees on Peachtree. We have an excess of trees, of free trees. If you'll go look at a couple places under the bridge at Peachtree in Dresden, you'll see, I used a couple extra pieces of granite curbing for a little bench. When you do the 5K, there's little benches down there, and that granite came from the city of Atlanta. I have a, I have a stockpile of it, if you ever need it.
Ronnie, you're on tape for saying that.
Thank you, Ronnie.
And where that comes from is the old house's driveways were six foot wide, and now they're doing driveways 18 foot wide, so there's extra pieces that lay around. And so just for your knowledge, that's where, you know, when you get extra stuff like that. And y'all have done a good job, and I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Chief, did you have any, the source for Ronnie's story, comment was the street about the rumors that we're losing lots and lots of officers came from the street as a source. What is the-
Yes, Mayor, as with every startup city, we checked around with other cities, too. When we hired the people, we gave them the expectations. We did lose 11 officers since we started. We're up to full strength almost already. Five, five of the officers were either, we've got high standards, so five of them were either terminated or resigned in lieu of termination. Four of them left for, for personal reasons, either more money in the private sector, they got tired of driving, they had kids and their family grew, and then the other ones-
Two, remaining two?
Yeah, were, are kind of on their way out anyway.
All right, all right. Gotcha. So it's not, it's not an abnormal?
No, it's quite common, because with the start of a new city, there's a lot of expectations. New officers leave other departments, and that's what we had to start with, with the expectations of maybe promotions very quickly, and we aren't that big of a department, so there's not that much opportunity for promotions or moving to other depart, you know, divisions and things like that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. So we're, have we hired back some of those different, hired, replaced those numbers that have, that have left?
We're actually up to the full strength already, the three. I think we're filling the last three this week.
Okay, good. All right. All right, let me see. Any more public comment?
Catherine Bernard.
As someone who has, before I got into criminal defense, I did do local government and administrative law, and we are paying far too much for lawyers in Brookhaven, and we have been for two years. And the letter that was just approved unfortunately sets up some pretty bad incentives, and in here, we've got litigation as hourly rates. We need to be discouraging litigation. Instead, we're in a situation where developers can come in and threaten litigation if they don't get the, if they don't get the deferral that they want, and that litigation, there's no negative impact for really anybody but the taxpayers, unfortunately. So I think that would be something that y'all should consider moving towards, something that is considered within a retainer agreement, rather than creating sort of endless, endless opportunities for outside attorneys who are being supervised, as well as our attorneys to work on litigation of all sorts. So also, the real estate acquisition, the title research. Title research is, again, something that should be fairly standard in one of these agreements. It's not something that should be, we should charge extra for, and I do appreciate Councilwoman Williams pointing out that there is a change with the addition of contracts over one hour requiring special billing rates. Maybe we have too many major contracts and intergovernmental agreements if we're, if we're finding ourselves taking a lot of time on them. I think ultimately, we spent, I believe it was $400,000 in the first year of Brookhaven on litigation. I don't know the exact figure for the past year, but we're shaping up to continue spending a lot more.